A formal session of City Council to order for May. Our invocation this evening is by Father Robert J. Cole, pastor of St. John the Apostle Catholic Church. Father, after the invocation, if everybody will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
In the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty, eternal God, in your kindness you bring all that is good in creation. Grant wisdom to these elected officials of Virginia Beach Council so that our citizens may continue to enjoy the blessings of life and liberty which you envision especially here in the city of Virginia Beach. Lord, you guide and govern everything with order and love. Bless this council. Fill them with the spirit of your goodness so they may always act according to your will, and their decisions may be for the greater good of all peoples they serve. God of justice, through your authority, this right the administered laws and are enacted with judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel the fortitude to these council members. May they always seek ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. Grant them courage that they may enact public policies with honesty and integrity. Move the hearts of all elected officials to fulfill their sacred duties with whereliness and well. Help them to extend the mantle of protection for our most vulnerable citizens, the poor, the aging, the mentally challenged, the unborn, the downtrodden, and to uphold the values of life and liberty for all. We recommend likewise to your unbound mercy all of our fellow citizenships who serve in our military, first responders, civilians as they seek to persevere, the freedoms which they enjoy as a city, a commonwealth, and as a nation. And we ask all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Father.
Madam Clerk, do you have the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. All present except Ms. Cain and Mr. Earn, who are both out of the city.
Thank you. May I have a motion to certify the closed session?
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made. Vote's open.
Mr. Moss, may I have your vote, please?
Aye.
Will you hit your?
Thank you.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have certified the closed session to be in accordance with the motion for recess.
May I have a motion to approve the informal informal session minutes of October the 16th, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you've approved the minutes as submitted.
Thank you. I'll now declare public hearings. First, public hearing on fiscal year 2018-19 capital budget amendment school renovation replacement project. Are there any speakers?
No speakers.
All right. On item H2, which is public hearing on fiscal year 2018-19 operating budget amendment Norfolk Virginia Beach Water Services Contract. Any speakers?
Yes, I have one speaker, Mrs. Marsh.
Good evening, councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about this. I know water is an important topic, but money is also an important topic. And I'm going to use that to bring up to you the pension unfunded liabilities because the $20 million that we are giving as a signing bonus to the city of Norfolk for this is an excessively large amount of money. This is actually a chart that Patty Phillips made, and it's so big it doesn't even fit on there. But we used to, back in 2001, we had a $63 million to the good bonus amount in the pension liabilities. We are now 1.2 billion short. And I would just hope that the City Council, in looking at the budget this year, would take a look at this and realize that we used to spend 105 percent funding on the pension liabilities, and we got down to years where we were 69 and 67 and 63 percent combined. We were paying partial payments. And it just really chaps my hide that we are paying $20 million for this water as a signing bonus when we haven't properly funded our pensions. And I realize they're not exactly the same thing, but I pay my taxes to fund the pensions for the schoolteachers and the firefighters and the people who work here. And to be signing this contract 12 years early and giving $20 million to Norfolk, I really question it. And I really hope that there's more fiscal conservatism as we go forward because I think we're really setting a bad precedent here for our first responders, fire, police, school, and city workers. And we need to watch our pennies more closely, and this really concerns me. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
That's all the speakers, sir.
Next item is the public hearing on Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant.
No speakers, sir.
No speakers. Thank you very much. Mr. Wood, would you?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda. Mr. I move for approval under the consent agenda. Under ordinances and resolutions, item I2A, ordinance to appropriate $20 million and transfer $2.4 million within the public utilities FY 2018-2019 operating budget, Ray, First Amendment to amended and restated Water Services Contract between Norfolk and Virginia Beach. B, resolution to authorize the city manager to execute the raw water sales agreement by and between Norfolk and Virginia Beach. Item I4, ordinance to authorize one position in the city manager's office to provide administrative support to the mayor, vice mayor, and city council, Ray, constituent issues, noting that Mr. Moss is voting nay on this item. Item 5, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a city property known as Lake Joyce and the 25-foot strip of land around Lake Joyce located at the rear of 4316 Ben Gun Road, Ray, remove existing bulkhead and construct and maintain steps, pier, mooring piles, and riprap. Item 6, ordinance to authorize $25,000 payment from the Cultural Affairs FY 1819 operating budget to the Virginia Beach Development Authority, Ray, vibe matching grants noting Mr. Moss is voting nay on that item. Item 7, ordinance to transfer $292,000 within the sheriff's office FY 2018-19 operating budget to convert five full-time positions to 10 part-time positions. Item 8, ordinance to transfer $809,087 within the Department of Human Services to reassign nine full-time and one part-time positions. Item number 9, ordinance to accept and appropriate federal funds to the Virginia Beach Department of Human Services FY 1819 operating budget A, $555,620, and authorize eight positions regarding financial assistance division. B, $499,582, and authorize one position, Ray, Child Support/Resupport Child Services Act CSA program. C, $260,346, and authorize four positions to support Part C infant program. D, $280,000, and authorize five positions to support Same-Day Access Initiative. E, $63,000, and authorize one position to support Kent Navigator Program. F, $306,547 regarding operating costs and supportive adoption services. Item 10, ordinance to accept and appropriate $85,108 from the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant for law enforcement purposes.
I declare a public hearing on planning.
Under item J1, Beschard Homes LLC for variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations regarding lot width at 1416 Mill Dam Road, Lynnhaven District, noting that Ms. Abbott is abstaining on this item. Item J2, FWM Residential Rental Properties LLC for variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations regarding lot width at 425 Oak Great Neck Road in the Southwest Adjacent Parcel District 6, Beach District. Item J3, Kerbor LLC for variance to Section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations regarding lot width at 3716 West Neck Road, District 7, Princess Anne, noting this consent to defer to 112018. Item C, excuse me, item 4, 27th and a Half Street Garage LLC, 27th Street Hotel Associates LLC for a special exception for alternative compliance to the Oceanfront Resort District Form-Based Code regarding total coverage of multifamily dwelling units at 2613, 2701, and 2705 Atlantic Avenue, 203 27th Street, and 2701 Pacific Avenue, District 6, Beach. And this is consent based on the alternate plan submitted by the applicant. And item 6, Tanya Mitchell and Bo Wang for conditional use permit regarding a family daycare at 1501 Three Gate Trail, District 3, Rose Hall. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. The vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you've approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood, noting Mr. Moss's nay votes and Ms. Abbott's abstention.
Mr. Moss.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on item I2, the water thing. I wouldn't want some to think that I voted yes, yes, yes for a signing bonus. But Ms. Marsh is correct about the pension things, but in reality, this is recognition that under the terms of the contract, we often received an excess of 10 million gallons of water out of Norfolk's ownership water for which we did not pay. And this is just, I would call this is a good faith effort to recognize that, and it's not a signing bonus, but recognizing the cost that they incurred that we did not pay during the period of the contract prior to the renewal. So I just want people to realize, we did not have a signing bonus. You think that's correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. All right, we will, I would like to remind everyone that the City Council Speaker Policy that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only planning items and items where a public hearing is required by state law. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. First item for, we're going to hear is the ordinance to appropriate $24,417,731 for fiscal year 2017-18 School Reversion Funds.
The first speaker is Mrs. Marsh, and after Mrs. Marsh will be Virginia Wasserberg.
This is what happens when you call early to speak. I come back again to this. Patty will not make me a 2018 version, so I had to amend it myself. And what I'm trying to show you here is that we funded the city at 82 percent and the schools at 75 percent, and we still have $989 million in pension shortfall. And then when you add in the 68 million for the retirement health and the cool benefits for liability, which are also down there for 165, we're at $1.222 billion that we need to come up with. And this all got created in 15 years. We were to the good in 2001 and 2002, and somehow this council, between then and now, has created this liability, this shortfall, if you want to call it that. And we are going to take until 2044 to pay it back. That's a lot of money that we have to come up with in our budgets going forward. And I'm asking us to go back to funding near 100 percent. This funding at 69 percent, or 74 percent, or 5 percent, that's what's getting us in trouble, and it's going to be transferred to the next generation. And I bring this up because here we have $24 million that the schools could return to the city and we could use very wisely to rectify this problem that's been created over 15 years. So I'm asking you not to let that money go back and just be spent on odd demands, to keep that money and pay down where you've obviously been taking money since 2003 to pay for other things. And don't do this so we don't get to be in a situation like Detroit where they had a problem with not having funded their pensions and they ultimately had to declare bankruptcy. So I think it's really important to take a look at this, and if you don't do it now, it needs to be a top priority in our Blue Ribbon Commission and figuring out how we go forward so the next generation isn't paying for this out into the 2040s. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers?
Virginia Wasserberg.
Good evening, and congratulations to all of you who made it through the election. You did a great job making it through, and congratulations, Mr. Dyer, on your election to mayor. I'm here to, while Mrs. Marsh makes a great point in not spending our money, the $24 million, I'm a realist and know that you're going to spend it, so I want to ask you to spend it on flooding, and that's what I'm here for tonight. If I kind of look back at what's going on here and look at what we have, I submitted the summary of needs that you all saw in your informal presentation today along with the CIP for Asheville Park. In the CIP for Asheville Park Phase 1, we have the $12 million, $12 million to complete Phase 1 is what the CIP, if that's different, I'm not aware of it. And in looking at this $24 million, I see it as money that can be spent creatively. And I appreciate what Ms. Wilson said today about us being creative when it comes to our flooding and finding ways to be creative with stopping the flooding, which is near and dear to my heart. And so I look at this and, you know, in, the only information that I have available to me is what the Virginia Pilot made available as to what the schools want to spend the money on. And it only really came to about $21 million, but $9.8 million of that was on capital projects, one of which is the Plaza Annex for about $7 million. Plaza Annex is in a flood zone, and creating more parking and more buildings in a flood zone is what I consider hazardous at this point in our city's future. And I would ask that maybe we need to put a pause on that and maybe reevaluate that because homes right across the street from Plaza Annex on Ferry Farm Road flooded in Hurricane Matthew, and they had a very, very difficult time recovering. One of my friends lives there, and I'm sure that they would love to see that $7 million on Plaza Annex put towards their drainage. And that $7 million can be found out of that $20 million, $24 million. In looking at that summary of needs, I have come up with a way of you spending that $7 million, actually, and that would be on lake dredging, canals, beach erosion, hurricane protection, and BNP maintenance. And I realize that Mr. Hanson did tell you today that these are not optimal numbers, so they're not really satisfactory, but I think it's time for us to make them optimal, and I think it's time to make them satisfactory. And maybe the schools need some more security, you know, and maybe we should spend some of that $24 million on that. But our homes and our families need the security from flooding as well. And so I ask that you kind of take this back and look into that a little bit more before moving those funds over for the things that the schools have said they needed. Thank you. I'm sorry, I ran over my time.
That's all the speakers registered, sir.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item? If not, may I have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion's been made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
First of all, I want to thank all the people who spoke, and I think all of us kind of know that the price you can pay, have your record distorted when you talk about priorities, but I want to talk about how we got the $24 million first, because people really need to know, how did the $24 million come out? So you've got to turn the clock back to May of 2017, that's probably a date you might remember from television, when the school board asked not for 1.25 cent real estate tax increase, which is what this body approved, but they actually asked for about 2 and 1/2 cents for full-day kindergarten for full implementation, even though the amount of implementation in that budget year only came to $2.2 million. Well, this council reduced that to 1.25, which was $6.75 million against a $2.2 million liability. So they had, we got taxed over and above the requirement for the publicly avowed purpose. I never find that satisfactory, but that's the fine print no one ever hears. And then as we go through the budget, obviously, if you end up with $24 million over, you probably never needed the 6.75 to start with. Well, principally, that came from two big sources. One, $16 million of it came from under-executed payroll, meaning they budgeted for a greater salary expense than they actually paid out. On the benefit side, it was in the small tens of thousands of dollars, which indicates that the benefits were being consumed, but the salaries weren't, which kind of tells you that the average salary or the salary curve, an economic term, would shift to the left because of retirements, their average salary cost decreased, and generates not a one-time savings, but a recurring savings somewhere between, I'd say, $12 and $16 million a year. So that's $16 million of it by over-budgeting, not by being extra conservative. The other part was about $2.5 million from unanticipated revenue that came in near the end of the year. So that makes sense. How can you know that? So the point being here is, there is an opportunity. They could have given teachers bonuses. They talked about how teachers are struggling. We could get kids out of classrooms, portables, which would be good reasons, but they came up with a different set of priorities. One that don't track with the rhetoric when they're out talking to the community about the kids first and the teachers first. No, it's now the admin services first. I'm going to support this because these people are elected. They held a public hearing. They came out and did this. But people need to know, when next year's budget comes up, in the five-year forecast meeting next week, I'm going to be asking those hard questions about, they have lowered and reduced their actual salary requirement, and they should be telling us how they plan to use that recurring savings to meet the needs of students and teachers. And your question about the flood area and the flood zone, that's an excellent question. I'm surprised that the staff evaluation didn't mention that. It didn't. I didn't know that for a fact. Shame on me. But I do think the public needs to know that they asked for a tax increase last year. That's money out of your pockets, and then ended up with a $24 million surplus. You were overtaxed.
Just like to say, John, this same conversation every time. You're asking to penalize the public schools because they have conservative budgeting practices.
Not conservative.
And that's exactly what you ask for every year.
They're not conservative budget practices.
They're extremely conservative, even by your own estimation.
They're not conservative.
And we've got 100 percent accreditation. We've got some of the best schools in the United States, and still you complain.
I'm not complaining. I'm pointing out that the school board...
Well, you distort the, you distort it, saying that they're asking for more.
No.
It's penalizing them for having very conservative budgeting practices.
All I can say is, if you understood finance, you'd understand my point.
All right. Thank you. I think we, everybody's made their point. Any further discussion? If not, the vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you've approved the ordinance to appropriate $24 million to the school reversion funds.
Next item is item I3, which is resolution to support the ratification by Virginia of the Equal Rights Amendment to the United States Constitution. Do you have speakers?
Yes, sir. The first speaker is Ron Rowe, and the next speaker will be Sarah Sinant-Car.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Ron Rowe. I'm a citizen of Virginia Beach. I'm not here to scold you, I'm here to implore you. It seems to me that, as a parent of five adult children, three of whom are females, two of whom have experienced the situation where they were being paid less for a job description that males were getting paid more for, that this situation needs to change. In the society in which we live today, there are many issues that seem to divide us, primarily, I think, because people see them as winning and losing. This particular resolution, I think, is an opportunity for everyone in this room, and in fact, everyone in Virginia Beach, to win. So I see it as a win-win situation. The first thing I'd like to say is the following: The city of Virginia Beach prides itself on having what it describes as a world-class educational system. It seems inconceivable to me that a world-class educational system would not support equal rights for men and women, males and females. Secondly, Virginia Beach has a large military community which now, for years, has supported equality in terms of opportunity among the sexes, and so a vote in favor of this resolution would be supporting that military community. This council, the city of Virginia Beach, has been criticized for supporting business and neglecting the needs of citizens. This is a perfect opportunity for you to let the citizens and citizens of this community know just how important they are, especially the women. Lastly, this is an opportunity for you to say to the largest voting body in this city, women, that you support their needs for equal rights and opportunities. If, and I'm about to finish, you're not sure how you would vote on this, I'd ask you to do the following: Close your eyes for 30 seconds. Pay attention to your breath, in and out, and your heartbeat, and recognize with each heartbeat and with each breath that we are all the same, and everyone in this room and everyone in this community deserves equal rights and equal opportunities. Thank you.
The next speaker, Sarah Sinant-Car. Sorry. And the next speaker after that will be Missy Carter-Smasl.
I'm sorry that I don't look presentable. I had to take my mom to the hospital today, so I rushed here. But I'm here to speak for a lot of people. There are more than 150 million women living in the U.S. And you mentioned him being a citizen. I'm not a citizen. I'm here with a green card. I was born in Iran, moved to Sweden, and now I'm here. Being born in Iran, I know the taste of women not having rights, women fighting for their rights. And then living in Sweden, there is a high percentage of equality when you look at numbers, when you look at women's participation in government and in the labor force and everything. And to me, when I read the Constitution, it really talks about protecting people's rights, but when it comes to women, we only see the voting rights and nothing else. And the difference between laws and amendments is that laws can be changed, amendments, it's really hard for them to be changed. And amendments protect people's rights. Laws can be changed. Yes, we do have laws that are anti-discrimination, but I don't think that's enough for the next generation. One day, I'm going to be a mom, and I would hope that when she's learning about the Constitution, she's going to know there is going to be an amendment that's going to protect her rights. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Missy Carter-Smasl, and then the speaker after that will be Kimberly Tucker.
Good evening. I wanted to thank Councilman Davenport for bringing forward this resolution in support of the Equal Rights Amendment. And thank you to the council members for moving to approve this resolution to show that Virginia Beach is a leader for equality. The ERA has been neglected in committee in our General Assembly, and so it falls to localities like ours to pressure our Virginia senators and delegates to make it a priority. A prevailing argument against ERA ratification is that it's not necessary, but let me quote former Supreme Court Justice Antonin Scalia. He said, "Certainly, the Constitution does not require discrimination on the basis of sex. It simply doesn't forbid it." So clearly, it is necessary for the laws of our land to expressly state equality of rights for women. I'm thinking of all women, for those who've come before us, for our daughters and for their daughters. I'm thinking of the women I served with in the military. We raise our hands to defend our Constitution, and yet legal scholars debate whether we're entitled to those very constitutional rights. So let us state firmly, we are entitled to those rights, and our city will proclaim it. Equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or by any state on account of sex. As Virginians, we must resolve to become the 38th state to ratify this simple and clear amendment, thereby enshrining the rights in our Constitution for women where they belong. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Kimberly Tucker.
I'm a bit of an anomaly. I come from a long line of black Republicans. And as a person who grew up like that, I remember the lessons my mom taught me. One of the ones that stands out the most in my mind is that I need to pull myself up by my bootstraps. And that's a lesson that resonates with me today as a 53-year-old... And that's a lesson that resonates with me today as a 53-year-old woman. Women today are doing just that. They are working hard. They are educating themselves. They are raising their families. They are working just as hard and sometimes harder than men. What the ER, what the Equal Rights Amendment does is it helps them do just that. Many times, when women find the need to file a lawsuit because they are being discriminated against, those lawsuits are thrown out because we do not have the constitutional protections, the Constitution that is supposed to protect us all. However, what's most important is that the ERA is going to pass. It's going to pass this year. What is at stake is whether Virginia is going to be the 38th state. In 2017, Nevada ratified. In 2018, Illinois ratified. Virginia needs to be the 38th state. The following cities have already passed resolutions. Alexandria, I'm, I'm sorry, Albemarle County, Blacksburg, Charlottesville, Fairfax, Norfolk just recently, and Shenandoah. In process currently, our resolutions are being, in process, Chesterfield, Powhatan, Prince William County. On the legislative agenda, ratification is in Alexandria, Arlington, Fairfax, and Montgomery County, and Staunton. Virginia Beach needs to be added to that list. Thank you.
That's, that's all the speakers. I have signed up.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item? If not, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion? Yeah, Ms. Wilson.
I find it truly amazing. It's almost been 100 years since we women got the right to vote in 1920. And in 1920, I believe it was August, and I can't remember the exact date, but August of 1920, Tennessee was the last state to ratify the amendment. And I'm embarrassed to say that Virginia was not one of our states to ratify. And the reason Tennessee ratified it, there was the youngest, the youngest delegate in the Tennessee General Assembly, his mother sent him a note. His mother sent him a note. And they, it was very controversial. They wore a red rose and they wore a yellow rose. If you wore a red rose, you were against it. If you wore a yellow rose, you were for it. And this young man had a red rose. He was against it. And he got a letter, he got a note from his mother that said, "He better, he better pass it. Maybe he better not come home if he had passed it." And you know, we, we like to listen to our mothers. And at the very last moment, this young man jumped up and he voted for the amendment, and it passed by one vote. So ladies, we were dependent on the men to do the right thing. And this young man listened to his mother. So Virginia, let's not be embarrassed again. Virginia needs to stand up and be counted. And Virginia Beach, I'm sure we're going to be one of the ones.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Very good comments.
Thank you.
Yes?
I just wanted to thank everybody who came out today to, to speak in support of this. I think it's very amazing, the power that we have as a community to push our society forward. And I'm just, I'm proud of everyone who came to speak, both men and women, and for the, the lady that was worried about how you look, you all look beautiful. And I, I don't think anybody needs to, to justify their appearance when they come here because this is a place for you all to share your opinions with us. We're the ones that need to look good up here. So, thank you for coming.
All right. No other comments? The vote is open.
By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the resolution to support the ratification of the Equal Rights Amendment.
We'll now go to planning item J five, which is Dam Neck Storage Partners LLC for a modification of properties to a conditional change of zoning from R20 residential to I1 industrial, and a modification of conditions raised storage container size at the southeast corner Harper Road and Dam Neck Road, District Seven, Princess Anne. Adam Blurt.
I have two speakers sign up. I don't believe the applicant is here. I did not see him. So the first speaker is Mrs. Marsh.
Why don't, why don't we say that the applicant has requested that it be deferred?
I understand that. And I was told the applicant deferred it to November 20th, which is a Thanksgiving week, and I will be out of state for Thanksgiving. So in observance of my holidays, I'm going to speak now. That's all I can do.
Ms. Henley, you gave a wonderful presentation, council members, about trees, and I am very much in favor of trees. And when this was at the planning commission, I stood up with this brochure and spoke about trees. When this was submitted, it was submitted with existing trees to remain as buffer. This was what was submitted when this all started for this Dam Neck. It was called Creech Storage, and now it's called Dam Neck Storage. And on the most recent revision that Planner Marcel, Marcel Coleman has, that is not evident. And my concern is the number of trees that are going to be cut down. I think with our concern about flooding and our concern about trees, we should know how many trees are going to be cut down. This area is very heavily treed in here. There's many, many trees. I think some of you have had individual conversations on council with people, but we need to know how many trees are going to be cut down. The thing that concerns me most about this, because I drove out there yesterday and looked at this, is Dam Neck Road. And I spoke to Rick Lohman, who's in our traffic engineering department, and we have between 22,000 and 23,000 cars every weekday that go on Dam Neck Road and 20,000 on the weekend. Those are an estimate. So on an annualized basis, we have 7,665,000 cars that, that go up and down Dam Neck Road and would go where this facility wants to put their entrance. It was not designed to have the entrance on Dam Neck Road, and through a stroke of a pen, that's been changed. There was a man apparently in an F-150 truck who died not far from there recently when they hit, he hit the back of a truck, a dump truck. So I think it's really, really prudent not to have ingress and egress on Dam Neck Road. That concerns me greatly about the risk to citizens. It's a 55 mile an hour zone piece of road, and so I think the developer needs to go back and talk to the person that they had the easement for in the past, and maybe sweeten the pie and get that easement reinstated because going in and out on Dam Neck is going to create a terrible hazard. We're going to probably have to have a street light. They also want to raise the height of the storage limit. It was limited to six feet. I question that, but I'm saying that we have to look at these things, and we really need to know how many trees are going to be cut. If we don't know how many trees are going to be cut, why are we saying one week for 20 minutes in an informal that trees are so important, and then turning around a few weeks later and then just going in and getting rid of trees that take decades and decades to grow? We need to be a little bit more thoughtful about this because it affects the flooding. Thank you.
The next speaker is Arlene Tanger.
We understand that this matter's been deferred. We just wanted to make sure that you all understand, the homeowners of Prince George State's are opposed to this modification. We are here today. We will be back here next week to speak in opposition. We have sent many emails, and we're just hoping that you all review those emails so that you have a better understanding of our position for our community. And we just thank you for your consideration, and we'll be back next week.
That's all the speakers.
Are there any other people? Anybody else who wants to speak on this item? If not, Ms. Henley?
I, I did ask several of these questions of staff this afternoon, and one of those, of course, being the, the issue about the trees, and it's, and would one of you like to address that? That does not change. It's just that it's such small print on this little map that we have that we didn't see that the requirement that the, the buffer of trees that was originally retained is still retained. And somebody clarify that?
So on page four of the staff report, it does provide you with a revised property that does reference the plan for 2014 that does show a large tree on the area to remain. So that will continue to be seen as a, as a, as a...
All of those trees on the edges will remain, and it's that ditch line that does have some that had just come up on the hedgerow, as, as far as I'm, as far as I understand it, is all that would be removed. But all of those others will, will stay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Moore?
Can we get a better scale with the more precise delineation? And can that also be provided to the Civic League as well? Because that really is, and I realize you're confined by this footprint that's in here, but I think that would be, be helpful. My question to the city attorney is, is the information that you provided us relative to the status of the easement and going back, is that a matter of public record or is that a privileged communication?
The information itself, I think, is public, yes.
Well, can we make sure that the Civic League has the advantage of having that information? Because I, I still have questions. Because in fact, the easement still is on the property in terms of its legal obligation for its current conditional use permit, correct?
Well, the obligation to, to provide and record the easement is a condition for the operation of the conditional use permit that has been granted.
So, so the property as is doesn't have access to Dam Neck Road?
As it's, as it sits today, unless you modify it as required.
Right. I just want the Civic League people to know that in fact, they haven't exercised the development of the property, but what was approved is still in place, and that easement is still binding on the property holder, and it's as-is condition. Is that correct?
They, they, that is a condition of the conditional use permit. If that condition is not met, then the conditional use permit is not valid.
And that would mean before someone could get a construction permit for that property as it currently situated, they'd have to prove the plant, the planning that in fact that deed restriction had been recorded.
Correct. The easement, yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
But it's my understanding that that property on which the easement was to be, that property has sold, and the new owner is not willing to have the easement there.
That was the representation that was made to us, yes.
So this easement is really not in place.
No. The property owner owns the property. He's bound by its condition, so it is in place unless we grant the property holder a different use.
Right. I mean, he does not have the easement. He was not able to get it. Is that, that's correct, right? I mean, we required him to get it, but he didn't get it.
That was a, it was a condition that you required, that if he cannot meet now...
Right.
It invalidates the CUP. He doesn't have property rights over that easement.
Correct. But he can't develop it at all unless, by the current zoning, which he, he inherits the condition of the property when he bought it, correct?
The zoning, yes.
And, and, and so we can enforce that. The fact that it changes property hands doesn't change the fact that there's a conditional use permit. We just went through all this with short-term rentals, and the conditional use goes with the property, and so now that's a condition on the property, and he can't unilaterally change that.
The, the, the applicant cannot unilaterally change.
Correct.
When we're saying he, we need to make sure which he we're talking about.
The property owner can't change a condition without us, or he wouldn't be here.
All right.
Maybe he shouldn't have purchased it, but he is obligated under the conditional use permit to live by it unless we change it, correct?
My, my understanding, and I think we're maybe talking past each other, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's what I...
But, but, but the, the property owner, the property that changed hands was the, was the owner of the property where the easement was to go. That owner has no obligation to move forward with that easement. But if he does not allow that easement, then your applicant for the CUP has no access, and the conditions for approval of the CUP have not been met.
Correct. But that's an obligation on the buyer of the property, not on the council itself, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Henley, did you like, want to make a...
Well, I, I think that, that is a, the critical point, is that, that access that was originally required is not there, and apparently is not available. And so we are looking at the property that is before us as an applicant, and I'm assuming he has to have access to a road. We can't say that he can't have access to the road, but whether he has access for a storage facility is what we're looking at. Because I'm assuming he does have access to a road, but it, it would have to be for agricultural purposes, what it's, it's designed now. Is that correct?
I believe that's a fair way of stating it, yes.
And so what is it, what the question is, is whether this property can be used for this storage facility, because that's what would have to have this conditional use permit.
Correct. Yes.
Did you want to make a motion?
And, and I think that, that is what is before us. That is the, that is the condition that is before us to be changed. Plus, there was also a change to the height of what the storage units could be. But those are the two things that are to be changed. Plus, I think it does clarify that generators that are on the trucks can be used, whereas before it said no generators at all. So that was just a clarification. But the main change is the, the access. And, and then, of course, the, that modification of, of the height of the, of the storage units, because those storage units, no storage unit is that height, I guess is the problem. But anyway, those are the only two things that are changing from what the original application was. And so I think all that confusion about the trees and so forth, we've kind of cleared up. That didn't change. Okay, then I will, are you all comfortable that you can hear it next week?
Well, I'm... I'm absent next week.
The Civic League is happy. I'm happy. They're the ones that have to come here during Thanksgiving week, so I defer to your judgment of what they need.
Okay. Well, I, the applicant had asked for a, a deferral to next week, so we can honor that, and I'll move that it be deferred to November 20th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, the vote is open.
Mr. Davenport, may I have your vote, please? Thank you. By a vote of eight to zero, you have approved the deferral of Dam Neck Storage to November 20th.
Before we adjourn the meeting, I see that there's two young men out there in Boy Scout uniforms. Would you come forward, please?
Mr. Miller from St. John's, Troop 179.
I understand you're members of St. John's, Troop 179, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Would you state your names, please?
I'm Gabriel Kraus, and this is...
Well, thank you for being here. You're welcome to come back anytime you like and observe our activities and the way we do business here in Virginia Beach, City Council. I'd like if you'd come forward. I'd like to give each one of you a pin that you can wear with your uniform if you'd like.
What year did you go to Fillmore?
Um, it was...
You can, anybody?
Um, it was last year, so...
Oh, great. Great place. Nice to have you all out here.
Well, we're glad you came. Thank you very much for being here. All right. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? If not, we'll adjourn the formal session. Do we have open?